Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith, I'm the mayor of the city of Vader. It's my privilege to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And I would refer you to the fact that unfortunately, our city clerk is away. She's had to deal with family matters like East. And our deputy clerk also was called away at the last minute yesterday for family matters as well. So I will conduct the roll call to ensure that we are recording, so we appreciate all of you present with us. It started with Mike Parsons, who informed our clerk yesterday that he would not be able to be here due to business complications. He's moved his operation from California to Washington. He's in transition. Joe Schei.
Present.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Leona Hunter.
Present.
And Jason Daly.
I'm here.
And Ken Smith, mayor, is also present. With that, we do have a quorum, so we'll proceed with our Pledge of Allegiance. Would I hope to please rise. Mr. Schei, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll proceed with the mayor's report. I'm pleased to indicate that we're still being contacted by individuals affiliated with the National Day of Service, which is going to happen on September 9th. And about 20 students from Castle Rock School District High School will be arriving to provide a supportive hand in that event as well. It'll be from 9 to noon. Start at Wharton Park Pavilion. And working with park board, the number of group are going to paint the jail with materials that'll be provided by the city. And we would invite any of all members of the community present to add on that day. I'd like to add an item that didn't make the published agenda, and that is an update on where we're at with the preschool building project. I spoke earlier today with Jim Mabbett, who'd been out of town on his summer vacation for the past two weeks. Can you hear me better? And he reported that they're still searching for the sewer line. They engaged in -- I did personally reach out to Tommy Spain. He went there and I was with him as he gave me his assurances that he could water which the location of that pipe. So I watched him, and he did locate what he believed was the pipe, since he was the one that installed it. But his memory is such that -- but anyway, they marked the spot and they dug this afternoon for the first time on that location. But that was just before the council meeting, and I have not gotten an update on that. But when I addressed that potential challenge with Jim Mabbett, the superintendent, this afternoon, he said that they're working diligently, nobody's panicking. And even if they don't find the sewer line quickly enough before the school should start, which I'm sure we will, he said they have portable restroom facilities that they've used in similar situations, and they will bring them to the site for use until that issue is resolved. Then they're reported -- he then reported that they have four children signed up, but tomorrow they're going to roll out a huge banner that's going to go over the front of the building. It's going to be an attention grabber, so he's confident that more children will sign up. But even if they don't, he said they've also decided that the second room on that facility will be used as a credit makeup facility for any students who go to Castle Rock High School, who are trying to graduate but might not have enough credits. And so this was a new development in their part. So they're going to have effective use of the building regardless of what problem they come. Now, council care to hear a comment from a member of the public?
I -- I up there tried to show them also where I thought the sewer line was.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they went in there and know they're not anyway.
Well, thank you for your effort.
They came down to Little Green with a friend of mine. He worked with them, he's a friend of the boss that was there, and they'd been down there. Sat there, and I told them about where I thought it was.
Yeah, they told me they had talked to you. And they did dig. They dug in three different locations. And these are deep trenches, telling me if they're nine to 10 feet deep. So so far, no luck.
I know at one time when we came way out into the street there.
Well, I can tell you that Mr. Spain knows that it connects down on B Street, it's by C Street Alley. So we know there's a pipe there. It's installed.
I was there this morning, and it looks like they'd trench down a -- oh, God, it must have been pretty close to 100 feet. And they had covered it back up. And so evidently, they didn't find what they were looking for.
They dug again this afternoon. There's a third pile. One more comment.
I'd like to change the subject.
Well.
I was wanting to know if the mayor would do a report on F Street of the trailer Scott demoed, if you had any info.
Now, the latest info is a week ago. It certainly responded. There are two homes that are on the target list, and we've gotten confirmation that they are going to be demolished. And there's a deadline, I think August 31st, to complete that. So they're in -- now they're in complete agreement with the city's efforts. So it's going to be a red letter day, those two buildings are gone. Okay.
I signed this, and I noticed there were some other signatures ahead of mine under public comment, your clipboard over there, so I didn't know if it's done before.
Mayor's report.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Later.
All right.
Yeah, I can move to mayor's report. Does council have any comments or reports you'd like to share with the public?
I've had an awful lot of people come to me and said, "I can do something about this." These and everything, Billy, these, a lot of that that were passed. I told them I can't do anything except that the council has taken change again or to do something bad. Then I heard that some people, for some reason, that cessers been around town, sneaking around town, and finding people that were supposed to have this and that done, and whatever, I'm just getting upset with the way people are getting upset with the city because I'd like to see the city progress and move on. But I'm only one in the council, but I've been there 30-something years. Never had these problems before.
It's pretty muddy in here. Want to turn the air conditioning back on or open some windows? Is there a vault? Is there one? You want to? See if that makes any difference. Should go now? There we go. Any other thoughts, comments? This is a city council meeting. We have individuals who are -- the public is welcome to observe, but council's objective is to carry out the agenda of the council. Do we have a comment?
I just wondered if you had gotten any further on the sign with the school district. Remember, you were going to check in with them.
I have not.
Okay.
I think I've left two messages, but I'm sure if you're being on vacation, he's letting catch up.
Right.
The second time, Jala entered the phone, said that she would get back to me. And I told her it wasn't, you know.
The mayor's job is to moderate the city council meeting. I've got to be honest with you, but if there are questions such as that, the guidelines of a city council meeting are that you follow the agenda. If a member of the public has a question like that, they're free to ask you outside the public council meeting. So it's just an operating procedure in a public city council meeting. I don't mean to be rude, but I'm just sharing normal behavioral guidelines. If there are people who wonder about that, then you might want to do some research with MRSC, Acceptable Code City Council Meeting Guidelines. So with that, let's proceed with the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of our last -- or tonight's city council meeting.
I made a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for 8/10/2017.
A motion submitted by Mr. Wilson to approve the city council meeting agenda as a public scientist for tonight's meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, the approval of the minutes from our previous city council meeting.
Can I make a motion to approve the city council meeting on 7/20/2017?
Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Voucher approvals for the 1st of August 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of August 2017 in the amount of $23,136.70.
Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve those vouchers in the amounts noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, and now we are -- our agenda calls for special reports. Tonight, we have Mr. Chisman with us from the Lewis County Sheriff's Department. I'm going to turn the podium over to you.
Did you get July stuff, or did you?
Yes, did get it.
So for July, there was no criminal offenses. There was 11 calls total, 467 personal citizen contacts. And I thought I would look up, since we went through six months, you're down on calls by 31 calls. And then on criminal calls, you're the same as what we were last year at this time. Eight criminal calls for the year so far. Three of those, I should say, two are cleared by arrest, and one is cleared by, not arrest, but all the property was recovered. Didn't have enough proof to prove that they -- but we recovered the property, so. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
I'm curious if any of the traffic stops ever result in tickets?
Yeah, and those tickets go through windlock court, so I don't know what happens to them, but yeah.
Oh, I always look at the infractions and it's zero, so I think those are traffic stops.
Yeah, in fact, I think the city clerk wanted -- and last year, they were trying to clean up some stuff, and everything that goes to windlock court, I don't have any contact with. I don't know how to get that, so that information.
Okay.
I know you do have a couple warrants outstanding, I think, through people through windlock court. So it must have been somebody, a couple people didn't show up for court.
Right.
Yeah.
Like so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. With that, it's time for a public comment. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. It appears we have four individuals who'd like to make commentaries to the council and to the public. So prior to that, I thought that it might be appropriate, since I was setting up the microphone, I observed on the podium guidelines for public comment, given the nature of our public comment of late. And so I was reminded that we operate under the Association of Washington City's legal guidelines, specified on that. So I'd remind those who are going to provide the public comment that you are to approach the podium, give your name, limit your remarks to three minutes. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any single member thereof. No question shall be asked to the council members, except through the chair, who's the mayor, who moderates the city council meetings. No person other than the mayor, members of the council, and person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion during public comment, either directly or through the members of the council. The last item is personal and slanderous remarks. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, for whom shall become boisterous while addressing the council, may be requested to leave the meeting and may be barred from further audience before the council, during that council meeting, by the chair or his other officer. So with that reminder, I'd invite those who are interested in sharing their observations to proceed. The first would be Cindy Beckford.
She's trained in the Navy. She's on cover because she doesn't like to follow.
Sure.
She's a hard act to follow.
I can imagine.
That's a joke, but it's a hard act to follow. I have a list, so I'll go very quickly.
For the record, your name.
My name is Judy Costello, 709 A Street, Vader. First off, the citywide yard sale was a hit. We had 25-plus vendors, or sales, each one making between $100 and $400. I think there were three people in town that made $400 at their sales. Mr. Daly reported that his business was up a tad bit at the restaurant, and the store did a little bit of extra business that day. So all is good. Second is the back-to-school backpack program. You're invited to buy a new backpack, drop it off to the community center. They will in turn then be taken down to the Vader Assembly of God church, and I believe that their back-to-school day is the 19th. So they give you ample time if you want to go out and purchase a backpack or two. My husband went out and bought toothbrushes and toothpaste for everybody. So everybody will get a toothbrush and toothpaste, because he's all been smiles, he says at My next comment is the community barbecue and potluck will be canceled. It was scheduled for the 19th also. The mayor reminded me that it was basically a private event, that I would need to go through the park board, pay $100 for the permit fee, and get venue insurance for the day, all of which I cannot do, I'm sorry to say. And I would like to make a suggestion to council, is perhaps we should look at our city insurance package, to see if maybe there isn't something in there that would give us just a little bit more leeway when we want to have a community event. So just kind of a suggestion. And other than that, that's the last thing on my list.
Great. Thank you. Now, Cindy.
Cindy Beckford, 10/20 South Street. I met with mayor last week, about half hour, 45 minutes, about opening up the city council area here for a cooling center, because we were getting excessive heat. And there's a lot of people that don't have air conditioning, that live in mobile homes or whatever, that may need it. It was a productive meeting, and it was informative, but one thing that came out of it was, it doesn't appear the city has an emergency shelter anymore. The Lions Hall's still there, but I don't think those people are going to let anybody in. And I've got news for you, I'm not letting anybody in either, except for maybe Mr. Daly, because he knows how to cook, but nobody else. So you're going to need to, or that might be something the city council should work on, is getting an emergency shelter. The other thing that kind of came up about that is, I asked about the Vader's emergency plan. The city clerk informed me that they, you guys have adopted, or the city council has adopted, Lewis County's emergency plan. Well, yee-bah. The problem with that is, the very first part of that plan says that each jurisdiction has to have a specific plan for their own area. Because I'm sure you're all aware that if a disaster happened countywide or statewide, we're not going to be one of the priorities, and we're not even going to make the top 10. And we're going to need an emergency shelter or some kind of plan in place. And currently, at least in that book that I was shown, there's nothing specific. And I looked at the resolution that in 2011, the city council adopted, and one of the resolutions was that each city of Vader department will be made aware of the specific plan and their responsibilities. And currently, that has not been done either. So I'm not sure if it takes an act of congress, or a subcommittee, or blessing from the Pope, or whatever you need to do, but you need to work on that, because, kid, I'm not letting anybody in. I mean, I believe in personal responsibility, and if there's a disaster, my husband and I'll take care of ourselves and nobody else. So, yeah, and we have vulnerable people here, you know? We have people that might need assistance, you know, on day one or day two. So I don't know if you need to put that on the agenda or what you need to do, but the other thing is, I thank the mayor for meeting with me, and I'd like to have another meeting because I have some things to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Just the council's information, I would be more than happy to meet. I thought we were going to meet this morning at 9:30.
Well, they told me you were gone.
Yeah, I didn't think you were going to be here today either.
No, I got back with them, and I thought we'd reestablished.
When I talked to Diane yesterday, she said you wouldn't be here. So as entertaining as I can be, I will sit by myself.
Well, it's too bad, I waited for you. Let's reschedule.
Yeah.
All right, next is Douglas Williams.
Douglas Williams, 626 G Street. I've been kind of disturbed lately that -- about the promotion of the city. And it seems like the mayor and the council are kind of falling short of promoting the I like -- at least the mayor should be the biggest promoter of the city. And it seems like you're kind of falling down on the job here. So I'd like to see more like Ms. Costello's project be given more weight as far as city promotion goes. So if you find that offensive, I'm sorry, but maybe somebody should do the right thing and follow their sword and resign.
Came very close to personal commentary, but I didn't doubt the gavel, so. Excellent.
I didn't call you that next.
Hi, I'm Hallie Sword at 811 A Street, Vader, Washington. First, I want to express my condolences about the lawsuit with mother last week. And we have a wonderful opportunity. I mean, I think it's the neatest thing that could possibly happen in this town. It's happened, at least I've been here since five years, and that's the preschool, the big building going in. And why I'm talking to everybody together is because we have an enrollment problem. The people are getting, the mothers, grandmothers, whoever, grandfathers, they are getting the forms to enroll the children, but they're not getting them to Castle Rock. And I have volunteered to drive them up there, a group of them. Mrs. Knight, who's our liaison person with the Castle Rock School District, is a citizen here. She has volunteered everything she can. I have some of the announcements, if you know, I'm going to approach the pastor, the somebody of God, if they would put them up, if the Methodist Church would put them up. Anybody else would like to put them up? Mr. Daly has been kind enough to let us post them in his store. The kids who need this the most are going to be, you know, it's been a struggle, but I'm very optimistic about it. I think we're going to have to make it happen, and perhaps they could convert that in a time of emergency to a cooling shelter too, because of the big double wide up there. Anyway, appreciate everybody's time, and let's do everything we can as individuals to encourage every little kid that we can to get up there, okay? If you have any ideas, I'd like to listen to them after the meeting.
Thank you very much, appreciate that public comment. Well, with that, let's proceed with our council agenda. Next item is that we have a comment to the public. We want to -- Public?
I was just already in. They left me off the minutes last week for the last meeting. And I'd just like to have my day along with that I talked last time. You know, it's just maybe.
Part of the public comment period?
If I could just maybe listen.
I think that's standard operating procedure, but I'll make note of that.
You're being off?
Yeah, no, to keep the --
Just you.
Yes. But I will definitely bring that to our clerk's attention.
Thank you.
All right, then let's proceed. With the first item is an update on the stormwater drainage maintenance issue. The -- from our last council meeting, the challenge, I think, was to determine exactly what sort of equipment we would need and how much that might cost. And we're still in the process of assessing that, because it's hard for our city employee to judge what equipment might need until we can discern exactly what it is that we want to do. So we're kind of at a loggerhead here. Of course, John was on vacation here, and is on vacation tomorrow as well, so we're in that summer season. But that's about all I've got to report on that. My thinking is that we may want to have a representative or have a workshop of some sort with John and President.
I was informed, and I can't remember which one, how, that the state said today we'd do, if we was go to the state, they would do the state's drain, and that's our main storm drain, all the way from B Street all the way down to the creek. But the moment it's on the state highway.
But once it's within the city limits of an incorporated city, the state will not do that. It's part of the city's infrastructure. So I know that's not going to be an option for us, unfortunately. So with the member of council who wants to entertain that prospect, I'd throw that out there as a suggestion.
I don't agree with you. I think we need to take care of it before it starts raining.
Try and schedule the date for a workshop. But, well, that's a suggestion, but it could come in the form of a motion.
Well, the storm drains, talk to some of the old people around here, you'll find out that that's where everything starts, from up here where the school used to be. Here it can go from east down to the west side, all the streets.
It just wants to flow downhill.
It's also raining.
I get a bunch of it, too.
Thank you, thank you.
It flows past our --
We should maybe appreciate it or something.
The reality is that we The reality is that we've been dealing with this for 111 years since it was incorporated. Obviously, it creates challenges for our residents. But it wasn't an item that the council considered as a line item budget. We've just allocated, through your good efforts, $4,100, which, can you say, spit in the ocean, the type of concept? And so council has to be responsible to legislate the expenditure of finances. To want to make a wise decision on the expenditure of that $4,100 requires some collaborative effort with our city employee and judges who know the nuances of rainwater, surface water drainage.
So John's working with you?
He's working with himself.
That's what I thought.
Our budget is already near expenditure for our city engineer. So it's not like we can call them in at this time. And if we wanted to talk about 2018, council might be able to reallocate some budget if this is one of those priority items.
What's, where's the question on the table here?
John, it feels like he needs to get more specific direction as to what is needed before he can decide where this $4,100 would be best utilized to solve, whatever problem it is. From my perspective, it's that drainage pipe from my post office down to the railroad tracks. But there are other locations that might be even more serious.
Maybe renting the scope, that, the scope that we talked about, about that that goes on multi distances and round corners and, and to see what all the problems are, and that way we can actually go from there. You can scope everything, like all of, all the problem spots.
Yeah, pick the various sites and, okay. Well, that's something that we can certainly...
Because the ones that are just, you know, running under the road, like the culvers, the, just underneath the ditches, underneath the roads, those are kind of...
Yeah, we learn to live within.
Right, but those are pretty much, you know, each other wrote up, put your one in.
One of the worst locations is just right to the south from city hall, the fire station. The neighbors are, that water is a flood plain and a pipe to carry the water out in the street is too small. It's not, it's not large enough to accommodate, maybe twice that much. So you have a lake.
Now, there's something that should be looked at and watched carefully. The railroad, I see, is going to close the railroad.
Yes.
And probably that you'll find that our old, two old drain tiles that they dug up one time, they're probably, that's one of our big problems, that's a little thing on that side.
Do we know what the roadworks is going to do there?
No.
Is that important to the city at all?
Does anybody know? Nope.
Whatever they want.
Yeah. Well, all right, so why don't I take the idea of scoping? If we try and get Winlock, we pay them about $200, they come in, and that turned out to be just a...
Yeah, this is, I mean, John knows what we're talking about, about something, a machine that'll actually crawl down the line as far as you needed to go and take video and stuff, so he knows what that's all about.
Council in agreement with that strategy? See a nod here, right there? Okay. We guess, let's start them, so, is the council, carry your comment through the public?
Sure.
Question. When you run the scope down, is all you're doing is looking, or are you cleaning it out at the same time?
It's a look.
Just a look.
Um, I don't, I'm not an expert on the thing, but I don't think there's anything that you can attach to like a water pick or anything like that to bust through anything specifically, especially affordably.
Some units have that.
I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
When I was working up at Wibby Island, we had a, a drain cleaner, and it was a trailer on its end, and they just hooked it up to the water, and it just used a water jet and just blew everything up, everything out, and it worked real good.
Works really good if the pipe's not collapsed.
Yeah, it's not collapsed.
Yeah, it's not collapsed, yeah.
And we are quite confident that that pipe is collapsed, just passed your house.
Well, Jason said it only went down about 30 feet up here in the culvert, down to, down the road, I guess it was. Well, that's where the Ross McDonald Island, the mayor was all standing there when the railroad company was digging up clay tile. And I said something, they looked at me and kept on going. They dug up the clay tile, which is the old drain line in the city of Vader, and they've never repaired it since. I made my point. They don't want to listen to this old man. I'm dumb, I don't know anything. I was only a contractor for 20 years.
Well, that's the way that it already is, yeah. Okay, then with that, I will take this direction and we'll report back. Authorize John to initiate that study. Okay, next item, update on the commercial pop-up buildings as retail locations. We decided, the council wanted to put this back on the agenda for further economic. So I'd invite the council to engage in appropriate conversation. We'll note that part of your packet is, is some research that was done on that topic.
I pointed out before the meeting that as far as the bakery and coffee stand issue, I actually brought that up. It wasn't, it wasn't something that Mrs. Costello brought up, so to take that out and change the responses. I mean, I'd love to have a bakery and a coffee shop, but, you know, you have to have power and that does change the responses.
With a sale, you know, they don't need power to have a big stand at the grocery store.
And I wonder, too, you know, nothing was in here, the farmer's markets, do the farmer's markets, do they have to have special permits when they all bring up their little stands and they sell their favorites and...
I can, I'd like to jump in here because last week, in furtherance of trying to build up and publicize the city, I met with Devin Jackson, who's going to be spending quarter, three quarters of a million dollars in repaving our, the heart of our community next spring. And part of that, it's going to narrow the street. And we asked him what his thoughts might be about putting that very thing. And so he went out and measured the amount of city property that would be available, and we discovered that there would be 25 feet of where the old street used to be would be owned by the city. It could be used for that very thing. You could sublease it to a private party to engage in it. And from his perspective, he'd seen in a prior location, little storefronts like that that didn't need power and water. So I walked away from that meeting quite energized about the concept. So I really think that if we were determined, and the city council was supportive of the concept, we actually have some, some real estate that could be made available for them. That would be a real boon to this community, which was one of our objectives, which is why we've got the new school going in, which is why we've got a second water storage going in. So many, and why we're tearing down the old buildings and making sure people follow their, their permit guidelines, which I think reflects a great deal of progressive positivity for the city of Vader by our city council and the mayor. So I made that a matter of public record, by the way. So, thank you. But now, I'd throw that out there for your verification, for the commentary. We have two comments from the public, would you like to hear them? Well, say it was first.
Well, whatever, I first. So that's fine.
No, for it.
Winlock Farmer's Market, I think, is under one umbrella. And I know the one in Longview by the fairgrounds, the fairground, that Farmer's Market is like one business license, and everybody falls underneath it, and they have bakeries that they bring there. They don't need power, water, sewer utilities. So that was kind of my thinking, what she was coming up with, and no offense to any of you people, but I don't really want to be on city property, I don't want to mix that. I would, I was thinking more of if I owned a piece of property over there, having something on my, my piece of property under an umbrella, Farmer's Market type thing with, I mean, maybe in addition to like the city, you know, because it's all in a similar area. So I don't think that you, I think Mrs. Hunter is correct, if you take out the utilities there, it might be a little easier thing to set up.
I think that's a great idea, but I think we're a little, I mean, initially, it's Judy Costello's idea for her property, and I think, you know, we're, we're going to find out if it's going to work eventually because if we was going to try it on their property...
Absolutely. Okay, perhaps have your comment.
I'm wondering how much of what I hear is actually under the domain of Lewis County Health Department? And we don't have a Vader Health Department, you know, it's, so how much of the decisions that have to be made on what we can and cannot do, what is legal and is illegal, comes under Vader, and how much comes...
It's all county.
It's all county, right. So sometimes I think that people get really mad at Vader when they really need to go talk to the Lewis County. Because I know their district, any other place I've lived, the county is the final word as to who gets permits to sell what and do what.
And even county subject to state to help.
Yes, right, of course.
Okay, then, hey, we're, this is all part of a research process in response to an idea that has been presented to the community. One more comment from the public? Have to get an affirmation from you?
Yes, always.
Question. You were talking about putting this on city property.
I just mentioned that it would be available if the council wanted to entertain that.
Yeah.
You could sublease it, say, for a dollar to stimulate development in the...
My, my question is, are you, are you talking open air? Are you talking something like a full building or, or just...
Movable, small movable buildings, not permanent.
Well, I think you're only limited by your imagination. That's the way I'd look at it.
And ordinances of county, and my program, it's just my imagination.
No, you have to have all the, reducks in a row or such thing, because there's always liabilities.
Well, Seattle, the, the public market in Seattle is essentially got a roof in the back and, and that's it.
But those are privately owned businesses, so they're way beyond the control of the city, but you're still subject to city, county, and state guidelines. Okay, more comments?
I think she has a great idea about this, and I think that, I'd like to know what the next step is, because it, I want to know, if I'm selling widgets, I don't need to talk to the health department in Lewis County. This is a city issue. The city would give me a business license, I'm guessing, and I would have a state license more than like later EDI and that sort of thing. I wouldn't need a health department unless I'm selling baked food or something of that nature, selling the food. So if I'm selling widgets, I would need a business license. I guess I'm asking, what's the next step? I mean, do you, do you approve of portable buildings? Is there an ordinance against portable temporary buildings? Is, is something, can we move forward or could she move forward?
I think I could respond to that. We have a city comprehensive plan that has zoning guidelines and regulations. My personal sense is that it would have to be amended to accommodate the concept, but it's not that difficult. You can amend your comprehensive plan once a year. So if an idea were formally presented to the council, it could go before the planning committee and our city planner, Gary Cooper, and it would not be that complicated. But they'd make a recommendation in the city council to amend the comprehensive plan and the zoning guidelines in that comprehensive plan. It'll take some effort, but it's doable.
So there's something against it now?
No, I don't think it's incorporated in the current zoning regulations of the comprehensive plan. Every city in the state of Washington, if the county has approved of, and Lewis County is, is part of that, it's a growth management act, requires every county and city within those cooperative counties to be subject to a comprehensive plan. So those are our guidelines in the zoning regulations of that comprehensive plan. So that's my long answer to it, but it's doable.
So do we need to make a motion in order to get that on?
Well, yeah, I mean, with regard to the concept of 25 feet, I mean, that's not available until after the renovation is done. But if you're talking about a private business owner, I don't know that it needs a motion. I'd just invite the business owner to come, and we'll help you walk your way through it. I know as onerous as that might sound, I know it's never pleasant, but we could work with our city planner and with our, maybe you could get a copy of the comprehensive plan and just to take steps towards it, and then make a presentation in the form of an application, present it to the city planning committee. So that's my, no, I think the motion necessary comes from within the private party.
The attorney recommended that we check with our building official, make sure that there wasn't anything out of the ordinary there.
That would be part of Gary Cooper, the city planner. And if it's consistent with what your thought was, and you're concerned about maybe some of the comments you made in our previous meeting, that we can start over again with that.
I'm just concerned that my comments might have thrown off the responses.
Yeah, it might have.
And it was, like I say, it was my big doubt, because I want a bakery.
I don't think, I need to remind the members of the public that we are good-hearted volunteers in the city of Vader who do the best they can with the experience and knowledge that they have. So contrary to perhaps some public observation, these are the people who are doing the best they can, and when we sometimes stumble, then we realize that we're not perfect, and thus we want to be as helpful as we can.
Well, for the money we're paying you, I expect more. I mean, that's all I have to say.
And duly noted, and we'll talk about paying in our next question.
Yeah, there are no, according to everything I see here, there are no roadblocks to keep us from doing this. The city planner says that we'll just need to maybe a special use permit, which we have control over. The attorney thinks we should make sure this zoning is okay, we're unsure it's commercial already, and our building inspector is under our, under our jurisdiction, so that's easy to go through.
It is.
A business license, everyone's going to have that anyway. And then the RMSA, they think we just need, look into insurances and, of course, food handlers' cards, once again, that would be, be a given, so it looks like it's all a go, we just need to put the pieces together.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too, so try to...
The fact that we've accomplished all of these, having our own within-house professionals who could provide this sort of assistance is really an outstanding accomplishment for this community, because five years ago, we wouldn't have had those resources at our disposal. So, yeah, sounds good. One more comment.
I would like to move forward in making the application for doing this project. I was wondering if I could work directly with the LM?
I'd suggest that...
In giving the application and that type of thing, and working with you and getting it filled out, or whatever needs to be done is kind of the, the go-between?
I would be happy to.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Fantastic.
Does that one make it a real...
She might be pretty sprout.
Alrighty, well then, with that, I think we've got some direction. All righty, well, then, with that, I think we've got some direction with regard to that agenda either. So, and that actually concludes our official agenda for this evening, so without any additional comment, the purpose meeting adjourned at six fifty P M.